Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Gladstone Planning Commission meeting Tuesday, April 18th at 6:35 PM. So, could Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
I can. Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Langston. Commissioner Levante.
Present.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Present.
Commissioner Mercero.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Present. Can we all rise to?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight, we are going to be doing the approval of the meeting minutes from March 21st. And then item number two, monthly planning report. Number three, continued from March 21st, the appeal of the home occupation permit, Adam Baker Tool Company. And then item number four is a public hearing for file DR-23-03, design review to renovate and add a vestibule to the existing Public Works Building on Portland Avenue. And then fi- item five is municipal code update project. Let's go with first, do I have a nomination to approve the meeting minutes?
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion from Jennifer and seconded by Commissioner Weiss. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss.
Yes.
Commissioner Levante.
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero.
Yeah.
Chair Smith.
Yes. Meeting minutes approved. Okay, then the monthly planning report. Staff, please.
Yes, thank you Chair Smith. As you can see, the monthly planning report is pretty similar to all the other months with a slight reduction in customer phone and email contacts due to a week off or spring break. So, might have a few more on our April reports since there were quite a few to come home to. But otherwise, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. And next on the agenda is item number three, our continued appeal of the home occupation home occupation permit for Adam Baker Tool Company on Kason Circle. Do we have George or Carrie or me that's, do we have anybody that is on Zoom?
We have George Or- Orm on Zoom.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and let him speak first? And then we can have a discussion.
We want to start with the staff.
Oh, okay, staff.
Sure, thank you. So, as we all know, this is a continued hearing regarding the home occupation permit that was issued by the city and then appealed by the Orms who had standing to appeal based on the code and the requirements that they filed within the 15-day time period. At the March 21st Planning Commission meeting, there was testimony from Adam Baker, who's the person who currently holds the home occupation permit, as well as written testimony from his attorney. And then Mr. Orm, who filed the appeals, as well as some neighbors. The Planning Commission closed the public portion and took a vote and came up with a 3-3 tie whether or not to overturn the city's decision regarding the home occupation. So, we are here to continue talking about the home occupation business license and whether or not the city's administrative decision to grant that should be overturned or should be upheld. So, the standards for home occupation business license were in your packet, March 21st, which is linked to the packet this evening. The home occupation criteria were met as determined by the city administrator when the permit was issued at the beginning of 2023. The city staff report that was provided for the March Planning Commission meeting continues to find that the home occupation criteria are met in this case. At the Planning Commission meeting in March, there was a question brought up about the Clear Vision Triangle at the corner of Kason Circle, and we did forward that to the code compliance program. It's not a requirement of the home occupation criteria that that piece is addressed by this body, so staff does find that that's a separate issue that's being dealt with separately. So with that, we continue to find that the home occupation criteria are met as the license that was issued by the city.
Now, do you want to speak to Mr. Orm?
It's whatever you're wanting to do. If you count, if the commission wants to discuss some more, or if you're what we can bring on Mr. Orm if you're wanting.
Does anyone have any input or want to discuss any of the issues? Okay.
Okay.
That's what I was thinking. Do we have anybody else that wants to testify?
I have not received any requests, and I do not see the applicant on Zoom either.
Okay.
I don't know if anyone else on here is requesting to speak regarding the home occupation.
Okay.
If so, they'll need to raise their hand.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Orm, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, thank you for the opportunity to testify before you once again. I'd like to say that carrying this over from last month, Mr. Baker's business here in the neighborhood has changed, the neighborhood has changed the look of the neighborhood. And since he has another business address in Damascus, he should move his business vehicles to that address and not have them here in this neighborhood. And I don't understand why that's such a big deal for him, since he already has another vehicle parked out there. My wife and I received the correspondence, thank you, with the with the letter from the attorney and the photo of the other property. And so, basically, what I'm asking is that the business vehicles be moved out of the neighborhood to the other address, so to try and restore the neighborhood to its residential nature.
Is that all that you have, Mr. Orm?
That said, I've covered my objections regarding the municipal code in my previous correspondence. And now, planning has said that all the requirements have been met, so so I guess that that's the end of that discussion.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't agree they've been met because there's still trucks coming here making deliveries and putting freight here connected with his business. And his garage is full of supplies for his business. You can see that whenever the garage door is open, so. That's it. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Discussion?
I would like to ask the city attorney his comments on the letter we see, we received from the Barnett Law Firm, the representative of Mr. Baker.
Sure thing. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, for the record, David Doofman from the city attorney's office, it's been a while. I used to attend many of your meetings, and it's nice to see some of you that I know, and I'll introduce myself to those that I don't. I guess in brief, and obviously, I, you know, I wasn't at the last meeting, and I have reviewed the the materials and talked to staff, and I think I have a decent understanding of the issues. The, you know, as far as the legal conclusions go in the letter from the Barnett firm, I agree with them. I don't take any issue with them at all. You know, the, 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 I guess the charge, I would say, of the Planning Commission in this case with this appeal, as it always is, is to, you know, consider the facts, consider what's before you, the evidence presented, and to limit your decision based on what the criteria are. You know, that is a matter of, you know, sometimes some judgment and some interpretation, that's true. These criteria are not always, you know, crystal clear, 100% objective. That's sort of the nature of land use. But you do have a, an initial decision that the city administrator rendered that approved the permit. You have a staff report here that concurs with that decision and recommends that the Planning Commission reject the appeal, approve the permit as well. So, you know, the real issue at this point that I see is, is making a decision based on these criteria. And so, to the extent that there would be a denial, the Planning Commission would need to, to, you know, confine this decision just as it would for an approval to what those criteria are, the relevant criteria for a home occupation. And so, you know, to the extent that there are other issues that are, are, have been discussed, maybe other issues that the Planning Commission or commissioners are aware of. You know, some of that, while not to diminish the importance of it, and I I understand there's maybe been some disagreements over the years, or at least with respect to this particular home occupation between the applicant and some neighbors. I don't mean to diminish that as an issue, or that it's serious, that, you know, it's nothing to take necessarily lightly, but it is important to, to, to think, does that implicate any of the criteria here? And that's, that's really what the, what the the requirement is for the commission. So, legally speaking, commissioners, I think that the the letter that you received from the applicant's attorney gets the law correct. Now, you know, the facts, you know, that's going to be something that you're probably more privy to than I am. I'll certainly try to help you as best I can, and I think you've got some great staff, and Heather Austin is your planner. We can certainly try to guide you that way, but I guess I just want to underscore that ultimately, if, if a denial is going to be upheld, if it were challenged, it needs to be grounded in what the, the code standards are.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or discussion?
Chair Smith, I have a couple of comments I'd like to make. First, first of all, from the Snap-on Tool website, Franchise Declosure Agreement, the first paragraph states that, and I quote, "Snap-on Tools LLC offers a license to operate a franchised retail mobile store selling high-quality repair and diagnostic tools and equipment." It's a mobile business. It's not a business taken care of out of its own home. In the Home Occupation Municipal Code 17.78, if you have the paperwork with 313 and 314, on page 314, number four says, "All aspects of the conduct of a home occupation shall be confined, contained, and conducted within the dwelling or within the completely enclosed access, or with a completely enclosed accessory building." Mr. Baker's business, I've had a similar business to that in my life. He, he does all this selling off-premise. He calls on garages, mechanics, people that do maintenance of equipment that requires highly skilled tools. While I, I have some empathy for him, I don't think he meets the criteria of a home-operated business out of Kason Lane. The other thing I'd like to mention is number seven on page 314, it says, "The premises shall at all times be maintained as residential in appearance cleanliness and quietness," and I think that's Mr. Orm's in the neighborhood's main objection to allowing that to continue as a home business.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Smith. Anybody else have any comments?
I'm wondering if our city staff wants to respond to that at all.
Sure, yeah, just looking at the number four first, that all aspects of the conduct of a home occupation shall be confined, contained, and conducted within the dwelling or within a completely enclosed accessory building. I, I agree, that does make it seem like it all needs to be within the, the house itself, or the garage, as has been stated. I guess where I went back and forth was on number five below, it does allow you to have a vehicle that it can't be subject to the state vehicle mile tax, such as long-haul trailers, but it can be like the tractor portion of a commercial vehicle truck, so. You know, I guess in my mind, like if he unloaded the truck into the garage every night, would he be meeting that criteria? Maybe, right? So, I, I could find a way to accept that that could be met. As far as seven, that's a very subjective standard, so that's more for you all to discuss and decide than it is for, from a staff perspective. From a staff perspective, we can look at it and say, sure, the garage doors, if the garage doors closed, it looks like a house he's got, you know, a trailer parked out front, but then he's got a recreational vehicle trailer as well. You know, there's a couple of big vehicles there, so seven, I feel, is more subjective and more probably up for discussion. Four as well. I can see your point for sure.
I do want to mention also that Ms. Austin at the last meeting referred to some of our codes as murky in nature, and I'm quoting you on that. It is, it's not, it's not cut and dried, but.
No, yeah.
And I do see your point. I just find myself not in agreement with it.
I appreciate that, and I will state also that I know that the home occupation criteria are being looked at from a broader perspective with the new code compliance officer coming on, and then with your city recorder, Tammy Bannick, people are taking a look at the home occupation criteria, and a proposal's forthcoming in a few months, but this is the code we have before us today, so.
May I ask a quick question, I guess, just to clarify? So, and I apologize again, it's just a matter of not knowing all the facts that are sort of germane here. But if, if I understood, was that, was that Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yeah.
Pat Smith.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Commissioner Smith's comment, it basically, there is a vehicle that's associated with this, this occupation, and that the applicant will, will travel to various areas to, you know, primarily conduct their work. So, I can, I guess I'm going to kind of assume, maybe this is what I'm looking for, is that the the aspects of the business that are occurring at home, are those mainly administrative? Taking phone calls, responding to emails, is that how, is that how it works?
My guess is, from having done the kind of work he does, most of it is done off-site during the day, and he probably has reports, orders to restock his vehicle, and any kind of reports his corporation asks him to make, but his general work is done off-site out of his truck.
Okay. And I guess what I would just sort of maybe throw out there to, to think about is, you know, if, if the reasoning is, as you suggested, you know, Commissioner Smith, that, that it, you know, it would seem to, you start, kind of the slippery slope, if you will, like, I mean, anybody that's going to be, I guess what I would call, it sounds very antiquated, I apologize. You know, but sort of a traveling salesperson, you know, somebody that, you know, is doing most of their business off-site, but may, you know, naturally have to do some, some work out of their residence. Taking that approach would seem to sort of preclude all of that as the code is currently written. And you might say, well, you know, there's probably a lot of people out there that are doing that, you know, they don't have a home occupation permit, and the answer to that would be, maybe they should, right? But, you know, what we're dealing with here is somebody that, I guess, has sort of said, okay, you know, based on, I think some, as I, again, as I understand it, some prior interactions and some code enforcement has said, okay, well, I'll, to the extent that, you know, this is a home occupation, I want to go ahead and get that permitted. I would just sort of put that out there to be careful that with that kind of reasoning, we aren't sort of prohibiting a large sort of swath of, of other types of, of businesses that might primarily be conducted off-site, but have a home component as well.
Chair Smith, Sergeant Okerman also has had a lot of communication with the home occupation applicant, so can speak a little bit more to what happens on site.
Okay, please.
Yeah, so basically, the Mr. Baker operates a Snap-on Tool franchise as a mobile sales business. So, his sales headquarters is out of his residence, or would be given if this is granted, right? So, he deals with his invoicing and payments and all of those things in a home office. He does store some goods when they're received, and then sorts them in his garage and in a shed that he has on-site where most of his deliveries are dropped off at, sorts those, and then loads his truck from his stock that he keeps in his garage. And so, and the only time that I've ever seen his garage open is when he's moving things from the, the garage to the, the truck. So, then he parks his truck at home, obviously begins his day, then drives his truck away from the house, and then goes and does his rounds all the local area dealerships and auto repair shops and things to, to sell his tools, and then returns home and then stocks his truck again. And so, the majority, like, he doesn't make any sales from home, it's just his sales headquarters is, is what, what basically that business is.
Thank you. Commissioner Weiss, do you have any questions or input?
Not at this moment.
Okay.
Or, sorry, one, Commissioner Levante, did you get a chance to review last meeting, or hear some of the discussion from last meeting? Okay.
Anybody else?
I guess I'd say, you know, I, I, for someone who owns a business, and that's great, I certainly feel for him as the business grows, and it seems like, it seems like it's becoming a little contentious in the neighborhood, and that, you know, is upsetting. I understand the neighbors' complaints, too, you know? You move into a residential area, and you're not expecting, you know, large work vehicles all the time parked outside of your house. This is a tricky situation. I think as, as someone who's owned a business, as a business grows, eventually you need to, you, you need to get bigger. You, you need the, the appropriate area. And I, I, I do believe the neighbors are impacted negatively by the business. And I understand Mr. Baker's, you know, need for that property. I guess one of my questions would be, and I'm not sure if law enforcement has anything, if this has come up at all, but I know that there is an RV on-site. Do we happen to know if, is that RV registered to the business? Do we know who that RV is registered to?
So, all of the vehicles on-site are registered to the, to Mr. Baker personally, or his wife, except for the business vehicles, the Snap-on Tool trucks and the Snap-on trailer.
You know, going through there, I saw a couple of vehicles through there today that were up on, on, you know, lifts. Is he doing any commercial mechanic work there? Do we know?
So, he doesn't do any work for other people, other than his work on his own cars, and then just like anybody else would have friends over on the weekend to work on a friend's car with his own personally-owned tools and stuff. That was already a complaint that we had previously that was addressed, and we confirmed he wasn't doing any sales or any commercial work.
I do remember when we were first speaking with him, he was a bit hesitant to, to say that, you know, where his, at the address, through the Secretary of State where the actual address was, which was the home, which is a little strange. I'm wondering if there's a situation where his headquarters becomes, let's say, in Damascus or wherever, and the, most of this doesn't matter, because it wouldn't be a home occupation anymore. At what point would it become an issue with vehicles on the property? And let's say, four or five months down the road, what's our situation? If really, it looks the same.
Yeah, so, so currently with his headquarters now being registered in Damascus, so he could be in compliance with the code currently, he is allowed to have the Snap-on truck parked in his driveway, just like the, the PGE driver is allowed to have his PGE truck parked in the driveway and everybody else, so. So, he would be allowed to, to still have that Snap-on Tool truck in his driveway, even if this isn't granted.
Would he be able to receive deliveries of goods?
Yes.
Okay, and would he, if it wasn't there officially, would he be able to have employees come to pick up vehicles if it's not technically his home occupa- if his home occupation business is, let's say, in Damascus, and his vehicles are at this neighborhood? And then, then how does that work?
Yeah, and so, that's where, yeah, that's, I mean, he's carpooling, right, at that point, and so, that's, that's really just a carpool situation, and because he was, i- if he does have the home occupation business, and it is at his house in Gladstone, then he would be prohibited from having an employee show up there. But if it, if he is, if it's not granted, and he retains the place in Damascus, he would be allowed to have an employee show up his house to hop in the truck with him to carpool.
And that would be the same for any amount of vehicles that he might have on that property?
Yes.
I mean, I would just say there, I think, I think that's correct. I would just say, you know, to the extent that it, it helps kind of form your discussion, I mean, the only limitation there would be, you know, whatever other regulations the municipal code might have with respect to parking for everybody, right? Any residents, not, not just a, a home occupation, but anybody, you know, whether it's street parking, you know, how many, where, and how many cars, or, you know, any, any resident of Gladstone, where they can locate those. That would be true, you know, for anybody.
And, and my heart, I'd hope that, you know, folk, that, you know, he'd perhaps be able to see that there is an impact on the neighborhood that does, from my perspective, you know, make it look more industrial, or, or more of a business at least, and would hopefully, you know, move out, move the business out to a more appropriate location. But I do understand that if he has a location outside of town, somewhere else, that he can park these vehicles there, and I feel like the the neighbors are going to be in the same, they're going to have the same issues there, almost one way or the other. Thank you for your, your comment.
Yeah, and, and I know that you missed the last meeting, and one thing that Mr. Baker did say is, is that he did recognize that the neighbors were concerned with his operation, and that, that's why he built this second driveway, and partially, and was able to park the Snap-on trailer back behind the front setback of the house to essentially try and hide it. So, I mean, he, he has made some of those concessions without being asked to.
Are you done?
Well, I, I think what I really appreciate about both sides of this discussion is we're all trying to look out for our neighbors and residents of Gladstone. We're all trying to find something that's in everybody's best interest. I think my understanding as it stands now is if, if we upheld the appeal and required him to have, to not have a home occupation and to have a headquarters somewhere else, he would still be able to park the same vehicles in, in the same spots. And he would then be allowed to have a second person meet him on-site. He's already agreed that if he got the home occupation and is not currently planning on having anyone meet him on-site, so. I think in this case, if we approve the home occupation, he's actually has more guidance around what he can do, including that not being able to park the secondary vehicle there during the day, so. Just, just wanted to level set on that, thinking through, you know, the, the expected change, you know, that as, as Mr. Orm described, that they're most interested in not having the vehicles in the neighborhood. That does not change if we were to take the appeal.
Commissioner Mercero, do you have any input you'd like to add?
I'm glad you asked.
What?
I'm glad you asked.
Okay.
I feel, still feel very strongly Commissioner Smith, Pat Smith, that I think the neighbors, at least my opinion, is the neighbors. that I think the neighbors, at least my opinion is, the neighbors have been abused enough that they're upset with what he does. And I still stand firmly on the appeal.
If I may say, I, I, if, I'm not sure that, to, to your point, and I, I agree with you. I think that we, I don't like our options. I don't, I don't love the fact that
Right. They're not cut and dried.
That, that we, you know, it'd be frankly a bummer if my neighbor had these large trucks going, moving stuff in and out all the time. There's like kids in the neighborhood and, and other cars making the turn around the corner. This is tricky. This is tricky. Yeah. I, I feel as if, if we allow, you know, if we say yes, the home occupation is okay, then to your point, we have some more. We have some, not to say control, but we can have a little more guidance to, to have an observing eye. Whereas if he has a headquarters somewhere else, I feel like it might be a lot harder for the neighbors to have some recourse.
I don't know that that would really, I mean, I hear what you're saying. But he still has rights as a citizen and a resident of Gladstone, you know, to park vehicles to some degree. It's just a matter of if he was actually doing his business elsewhere, I think it would be less activity. Because I think that's also been an issue for the neighbors, at least from what they've shared with us. I, you know, because I don't know the situation personally.
If I may say, I'm not confident that you will be moving his vehicles to another location necessarily though, because he wouldn't have to.
Right. Let me see if I understand this correctly. He does have two vehicles. One is already parked out in Damascus, but he is allowed to have one that he goes to and from on his own personal property.
So yes, but if he is not, if the appeal is granted and the home occupation permit is denied, the number of vehicles, there's a limitation obviously to the number of vehicles that one person can fit on their own property.
Right.
But if they can fit on the property, they can be any vehicle.
Right.
So, I, I mean, he could, he could choose to park all of his Snap-on Tool trucks there. And, and I don't know that there is anything in the code that would prohibit that. So.
The, the only thing in the code that prohibits parking is when you're parked on the street in a public right of way. That is specifically yet on property. If he decided to, now I'd have to look at the code. So looking at if he can, he put concrete and an RV pad all over his house, front of his house, and he could fit vehicles up there.
Anybody. Pretty buddy. I think he's allowed to do so, yes.
Anybody, not just, not just, you know, Snap-on Tool, but anybody, any resident.
Yeah, that was exactly my point. I mean, you gotta, you know, if that's the basis for the denial, number one, you gotta be able to show where that is in the code. But number two, think about, you know, all the other sort of iterations or possibilities, you know, that that might affect, you know, every other resident of Gladstone.
Okay.
Hey, can I just ask a, a question out, out of naivety? I believe the Orms did have a fee to file a appeal here. I'm just curious, is there any, because this is a debatable topic and because I think they were well within understanding that this would be something that was worth discussion, can we make a decision to refund the, the fee for the petition if this does not go the way that they had hoped it would go?
Generally, we don't, I don't think we've done that in the past, have we, Tammy?
Typically, no.
Yeah. When you do applications, whether it's for, you know, a permit or whatever, if things don't pan out, you don't get refunds. Part of the plan. So to move forward, unless there's any other questions.
Was the city attorney, did you have something you were going to say?
You know, I, I know because that was exactly what I was going to say.
What? No?
I, I just, no reason to follow up if it's been said. I don't want to.
Okay.
You're, so I, I agree with what you said, that there's really, yeah, it's, it's ultimately, it's a, it's a cost that the city has. The fee is really to, to approximate just the, you know, the cost of processing the appeal. It's not based on whether, you know, it's approved or not.
Okay, so to move forward, I would entertain a motion to vote on this for hopefully the last time.
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second? What?
And what is the motion?
To vote for regarding the appeal of the home occupation permit.
And, and Chair Smith, would you mind doing one quick motion before that? And that would be if there is no other public testimony, you're not going to take any more, just to, to first close the public hearing and then proceed to the, to the discussion and, and decision. Thank you.
Could I have a motion, please, to close out the public hearing and discussion?
I'll make a motion to close this discussion on, on agenda item number three regarding Adam Baker Tool Company Home Occupation.
Do I have a second?
I'll start then.
Okay, so Jennifer made the motion and Commissioner Mercero seconded it. Tammy, can, we have a, we need a roll call vote, don't we, to close it out? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Volbada?
Yes.
Mr. Wees?
Yes.
Commissioner Levante?
No.
No, this is for closing out.
The argument, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I still would like to hear more.
Okay.
Yeah, no.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes. So the public hearing is closed. Now I would love someone to make a motion so we can vote on this topic.
If, if Commissioner Levante would like to continue discussing, are we, we're still open for discussion outside of the public hearing?
The Planning Commission can deliberate all it wants at this point. It just can't take any more, you know, public testimony. And you can also communicate with staff. That's fine.
Very, okay.
Go ahead.
I want to be a listener, though. Bad enough to say, I'm, I'm, I am truly torn on this. And what, what I envisioned coming into this has, you know, it's a little different. So I, I'd like to hear more from the other members of the commission. And if there is nothing, then, you know.
I will just read what the, you know, I know it's vague, but I will reread what the criteria is for determining. I'm just going to throw things out there and other people can too, if that's going to help the process. Number one, office for professional, personal or business services. Number two, studio for arts, handicrafts or tutoring. Number three, shop for limited or customer production or minor repair service. And number four is headquarters for a craftsman or a salesman. That's the criteria.
So would it not match that last criteria? Headquarters for a salesperson?
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, that particular, that particular one, yes. But if you go to page four, it says that all the work needs to be done within, within the residence, and that's not the case. It also says the premises shall be maintained as residential in appearance cleanliness and quietness. Granted, it's murky, but that's what it says. And while we may have legitimate disagreements on that, some people might say, hey, it looks like my neighborhood. And I say, it doesn't look like mine and I want to make sure mine doesn't look like that.
Sure.
So that's kind of, again, this is a tough one. This is not easy. And I really appreciate everybody's level-headedness and how this is being discussed.
And the one thing that always brings me back to the same point is, and I clarified this with our planner, if that whole case on circle is R seven, which is strictly residential, there's no mixed use, there's no commercial. It's straight residential. And I, I do believe there's zoning for a purpose and a reason. And that's kind of where I keep focusing, because if I go into a residential area and it's all residential, unless it's in, contained inside the home, I don't want to be seeing, you know, US freightways coming and delivering a bunch of parts or whatever. This is just my personal and based on what I've read in the codes. So it is all R seven. It would be different for me personally if there was some mixed use or some commercial, but there isn't. So go ahead, Commissioner Wees.
Well, is, chapter seventeen dot seven eight does apply to R seven though, right?
I'm not sure what, you'd have to read it.
Sorry, the home occupation section does apply to R seven, the same as it would apply in any other zoning.
Right, but that's based on the criteria I just read though, from seventeen point seven eight.
Yeah, I, I just, when, when you say that the sticking point for you is the R seven zoning, I think this was written to apply to R seven zoning as well.
But see, and, and I have to agree with Commissioner Smith. I, I don't think his business, and it is murky. I don't think his business fits that criteria like, that would make me feel more comfortable. Or for the, let's, for the citizens on that, on that circle. It's a dead end street. It's.
Trying to balance the rights of a group of citizens that live on the street, none of whom seem to be terribly excited about this. And Mr. Baker's and his, his, his concerns and rights are very legitimate, need to be taken into consideration.
Yeah.
How we vote doesn't seem like it's necessarily going to solve any of the neighbors' problems. Because there's still going to be vehicles there. If it's a home occupation business, then we have some, the city has some, you know, has some input. If we don't allow it, then, you know, we can, I don't know if it's going to help the neighbors. I don't think Mr. Baker's going to be moving all those vehicles off premise. And, and I, you know, I haven't seen much to indicate that. I, I feel like, I, I, I feel for the neighbors. I really do. I really do. And, and it's, it's tough because if, if, how our vote, I, it's a tough one. I'm not sure.
I want to say just one more thing and then I promise I will be silent for the rest until it's time to vote. But again, having kind of been in this business, while he does, I, I will concede that he does operate a sales office. He's also operating a distribution center there. He receives product in, which is unloaded and put on trucks and taken out, which is a warehousing function. It's not a sales function. And says he doesn't do that, but he does. Another comment I wanted to make, somebody said something about how his garage looks. If you went around and opened all the doors on garages in Gladstone, about half of them be condemned.
I'm lucky I can get my car in.
Cannot hold that against him. But he basically is operating out of that, a distribution center as well as a, a sales office.
And I guess, question for, for, for law enforcement here. So if, if we don't allow the home occupation, can he still, would he be able to receive deliveries like anybody else would? As long as it's kind of, you know?
Nothing, nothing restricts deliveries. We can't stop Amazon from delivering packages nor UPS.
Even if they're large vehicles that are.
Even, even, even if someone wants, if we have homes with, that have received deliveries on pallets and there are stones for yard work, right? So we just can't restrict that.
But what is, what if that is every day?
Yeah, that's a one time. Sure, but how many deliveries residents, Amazon's through town all the time.
But they're a much smaller truck than like.
No, I, no, I totally get it. I, I, but you're talking about deliveries and it's very difficult. And I'm going to put ourselves in this perspective here. It's very difficult for code enforcement to try and delineate between decisions made versus what's actually occurring and having to determine what size of vehicle is what, and does it meet this, does it meet that, the weight of the vehicle? That's very difficult. Almost impossible.
So, and essentially nothing will necessarily change with deliveries to the home. So once, so it, I feel like sadly, for many of the neighbors' complaints, there's nothing really to, to help with that. Because there will be large vehicles, there will be deliveries. That, that may perhaps the difference is if we allow the home occupation license, then, you know, he wouldn't be allowed to have people coming to the house. He'd be limited on the amount of vehicles that are there. And that, and otherwise, we, we have no recourse.
If he continues to operate his business without having the right license, he'll get fined.
I, I understand that. Well, now, understanding that as a second location, it's just a simple matter of paperwork, I'd imagine, for him to, to change that home address, to change that business address to Damascus.
If he's got that, if he's got that option, why doesn't he just move everything?
Why, why isn't he doing now? I mean, having this.
You, you, you're saying, I mean, according to the state of Oregon, with the paperwork he filed, that's his primary place of business. So he could move everything there.
And, and then we're in this situation where we're able, possibly the vehicles, the Snap-on vehicles, the neighbors are disappointed because there's loud vehicles and deliveries all the time.
There's a no win situation here. I think we need to vote and get this over with.
Could I ask staff one question? What is the purpose of him even trying to, to get this home occupation permit? If nothing's going to change, if he can continue to do exactly what he wants to do, why is he fighting this?
I, I think he wants to have a business license in the city. I think he has that. And so the home occupation is tied to that. He could still have a business license if he has a business offsite. So if that does become his primary in Damascus, I think he can still obtain a city business license without any business conducted at his property. I think he wants to legitimize that, you know, list this as a business address with a license number and then the home occupation accompanies that if he's legitimately working out of this site. I think if he doesn't have the home occupation license, then he has a business license and he's, you know, compelled to work out of his Damascus site. But does, does that mean somebody's going to come check and see if he's doing invoicing at his dining room table at night? I don't know, you know? I think he's trying to legitimize his business at this location.
That's, I think, exactly right. That was Heather, I'm pretty sure. I'm sorry. And that's my point. I mean, I think that you need to think about, you know, it's not that, the city's not going to go and, and look to see, you know, I don't think, you know, who else might be doing, you know, some of that more administrative kind of work, you know, at their house. And that to me is just more, based on how your code reads now, is less about this applicant and more about, well, it sounds like we maybe should be seeking more people to come in and get home occupation permits, right? And that's probably informing your discussion on the new code, because that doesn't seem like you could do that. There's something unlawful about that, but it, it doesn't seem really that reasonable or, or reflect kind of, even before COVID, you know, modern kind of, you know, practices of how people work. So that's just me. I'm going to stop as well. I just think it's, it's, you know, it is, these are some, you know, some of these, some of these criteria are, are absolutely, as I said to begin with, they are subjective. And that's kind of true of a lot of land use criteria. But I think it's, it's mostly a matter of the commission. And I think, you know, some of you have, even if people maybe reasonably disagree about that, as, as Commissioner Pat Smith said, you know, articulate what the criteria are that are being unnet before you'd issue a denial.
Chair Smith, may I ask City Attorney Doofman a question?
Please.
It's Heather again, David. So the code says that a home occupation permit shall remain valid indefinitely, subject to the payment of annual business license fee unless a substantial increase in intensity of the permitted use occurs, which shall require application for a new permit. My question is, if we change the home occupation criteria, so every year he has to obtain a business license, and at that time I would assume the home occupation is verified because it's part, it's associated with that. If we change our code to say something like, you know, each year the home occupation shall be reviewed with the business license review to ensure compliance with criteria, and we change the criteria, would he then be sort of grandfathered into these current criteria? Or would he after a year be subject to the new criteria that we've had a chance to thoughtfully craft?
It's a great question. So kind of, is it non-conforming? Yeah. So I would think that he would need, I don't think it would be non-conforming in there for, if you had a new criteria that said annually you must, you know, essentially renew your home occupation permit as well. I think he would be subject to that as anybody else would. To me, you know, the, we think of, we think of non-conformity as like either in a use or a structure. So if you were doing something on the property that was once allowed but is now prohibited, you know, you'd be able to continue doing that. That would be considered non-conforming. And unless and until you stop doing it, you'd be able to continue. But this seems more administrative in nature and more in terms of maintaining a license. And I think if that standard changed, everybody with a home occupation permit would need to do that going forward.
Thank you.
So I was actually thinking something very similarly along those lines and also not sure if this is just absolutely wild, but figured. So I was actually thinking something very similarly along those lines, and also not sure if this is just absolutely wild, but figured put it out there anyway. Is there a way to like temporarily approve for like six months a year and be able to be like, give it, give it like a temporary approval to, to see if it would work, to see if we're, you know, if he's staying up to code, following, following, you know, what law enforcement's laid out for them, following code, and then in six months, two year or whatever, they come back again, to, to, not City Council, Planning Commission, where are we?
Where are we?
To, to review, to review how it's gone for the last six months and give permanent approval, or, or be like, you know, listen, this, because of this reason, this reason, then this reason, it's not, it's not, you're not conforming to these codes, you're not conforming to these rules, and because of that, you know, we can't, we can't give you permanent approval, is that something within our realm to even consider or do?
I don't think we have the manpower, do we?
So I, I think it goes back to the code in place right now, which says that a home occupation shall remain valid indefinitely, so I think we are
tied into that.
Tied to that, because that's the current code, if we made a change to that code, we could do that, but I think because we have to base our decision today on the code that's in place today, I think we're stuck with a permanent decision.
I would, I would agree with that, and the only other, I guess, kind of gloss or little piece I would put on that is just, you know, you can have conditions that are meant to ensure that the criteria that are here are met, to the extent that there's any, you know, question about that, and so, you know, to the extent that there was a condition that the planning commission imposed, let's say, with respect to, you know, the appearance, right? That was, I know, a concern that was raised in terms of maintaining it as residential in appearance. If a condition, let's just say, was that you should, you know, make, make sure that the garage door is, is, you know, generally closed during business hours, yeah, I don't know what exactly that would look like, but something like that, that would be meant to ensure that it stays residential in appearance. If that's not being met, then that would be a basis to say, hey, you're not meeting this condition of approval. But nothing that I'm aware of right now, as it's written, as Heather said, that would say you could allow it temporarily and then require them to come back later.
So that actually, thank you for that, that, I like that, with a condition of approval, is that something that you guys, I know there are at least three of you who are, are on on the edge, or maybe just not on the edge, or on the other side or whatever, but would you consider approving this with a condition of approval, with the requirement of, of maintaining the area as residential in appearance, is that, would that, would that resolve kind of the, the hurdles at all?
I believe, I wonder, I, wouldn't it, well, I mean, I'm not sure either way, what we do today is going to solve the problem for the neighbors.
That's right, this is a mess.
And that's what I'm.
All we can do is the best with the code that we have today.
Yep, and then I always look at it too, it's like, okay, one person, how many residents on this street? It's just, this is a tough one, but I do think we need to vote.
Call for the question, as they used to say.
Yes, I think we need to vote and move forward, so. Motions, please.
Okay, I make a motion to adhere to the city staff with approving the home occupation permit with the condition of approval to uphold the, the residence as residential in appearance.
Do I have a second? Okay, Commissioner Volda made the motion, and Commissioner Reese seconded it. Tammy, can you do a roll call vote and be very clear, this is, yes would be to grant it, correct?
To grant.
And no would be denied.
Just, yeah, I think it'd be, the yes, if I understand, it would be to deny the appeal and to uphold the approval from staff, correct?
And now I'm confused.
I think the motion was to uphold Jackie's decision and deny the appeal, but I don't want to put.
And that would be a yes vote, correct?
That would be a yes.
Correct, okay. Okay, Tammy, roll call vote.
If I can just intercede one more thing, that, and then the condition would be linked to sub criteria seven, that the premise shall at all times be maintained as residential in appearance, cleanliness and quietness, that would specifically be a condition of this approval.
Yes, special condition.
Could you define what residential in appearance means, and we're going to go around in a circle again, I mean, that's a, to me, it's a nothing burger, it's on, it can't be defined.
I, I agree with you.
Yeah.
But with noise, though, how, how do we?
I haven't heard of noise as an issue here, but I would, yeah, save to the, I have three boys, so I'm not one to speak on quietness at a property, but it's a great question, and I think, you know, your law enforcement and code compliance program would have to make that call.
I guess if, if we look at the noise ordinance, and it's violating our noise ordinance, then, in decimal readings, then I think that's where we'd have to lean on. That would be, that would be my educated opinion.
Tammy, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Mercero.
I vote the same as I did last time, no.
Commissioner, Commissioner Pat.
What no means.
So can we just verify, clarify for Mr. Mercero exactly what, what the no is here?
A no would, go ahead, David.
I, I was just going to say, a, a, a no would mean that you grant the appeal, you think the people that filed the appeal are right, and that the city should not have approved the home occupation in the first place, it would void the original approval.
Thank you.
A yes would say that the city initially approved it correctly, and we would reject the appeal.
My, my answer is no.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
No.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss.
Yes.
Commissioner Volda.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
No.
That, that's a tie, three yes, three no, David, how do we proceed?
Oh, I, I, you know, I didn't realize we're still short a commissioner, is that correct?
We are, correct, yes.
Well, we are in the same, the motion doesn't carry, so I think we kind of have two options here. As, as.
He needs to go find.
You know, I, I, yeah, I mean, normally in these situations, what I say is basically, you know, if you can't get the, let's see here, boy, this is tough. Okay, the motion was to essentially uphold the staff decision. And that motion failed. So you have two options, you can, again, wait until you have a quorum. And I don't know, Heather, there's, I think technically a one hundred and twenty day issue here, but putting that aside for a moment, probably the better way to approach this, because you could go round and round on this for a while, is to, to deem the initial, to say basically that the initial approval was denied, so it would, it basically would, would cancel out staff's approval initially, uphold the appeal, and then the applicant then would, would, they wanted to, could appeal the decision to City Council. I think that's your, those are your two choices at this point.
From a timing perspective, are we under any?
I'm, I'm just trying to pull up of that, when the appeal was issued or submitted and do that calculation, so I just need a moment for that.
Okay, thank you.
Any chance you can reach?
I tried. He's driving, or he doesn't want to be interrupted, he's not responding.
It was received by the city on February first, so I just need to add seventeen weeks plus one day to that.
He was four, should make it four to three. Just approve the appeal.
Yeah, but he didn't even want to get on the call via.
We have until June first, so we would be able to come back.
One more meeting.
Would that, though, June first would be the deadline to have a final decision, Heather?
That's correct.
Okay, so, and there is a right of appeal to the City Council as well?
That's true, yep. So we would not have time to do that, because our May meeting would be on the sixteenth, I suppose we could turn it around on the twenty second at council, but the applicant would have the chance to.
Extend it.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think there's a significant risk here of one twenty day court proceeding, but it's there, but, yeah, I mean, I think that you can either just call it, because you're going to have a deadlock either way, right, no matter what motion is there, I'm assuming, I shouldn't say that, I mean, someone could throw out another condition, maybe to make it more appealable for one side or the other side, if you will, but one position or the other, but you know, if there's, there's always going to be that quorum issue in play, and it may be the, you know, better approach here at this point is to say it's denied and you need to go to City Council, but you do technically have both approaches.
That, David, that's what I'd like to do, is to actually, you know, I would like everyone to weigh in on this, is that this go before City Council and let them make the decision.
But to be clear, the appeal would have to be filed by the applicant.
Okay.
But nevertheless, you know, the, the risk is, is that if you, if you wait for a, you know, the possibility next month of having a full commission, that it, it again doesn't happen. So I, I don't have a great piece of advice for you there, this, procedurally, the safest thing to do would just be to, at this point, with the vote, two months, you know, three, three deadlock to deny it, and then, you know, the applicant, of course, would have the right to appeal it to the council.
We want to try to do another vote, just to see if anyone changes their mind?
Are there any conditions in which you three would consider?
First of all, Mr. Doofman, is it possible for us to vote again?
Sure, yeah, I mean, you don't have a final written decision yet, so, you know, all of this, you know, is just more of a tentative oral decision, so. Yes, if someone wanted to make another motion, it doesn't have to be seconded, it could, you could vote on that.
I move that we vote again.
I'll second the motion.
And so, it's great, and then someone needs to make a motion that you would actually, you know, you can vote on that, the motion to vote again, but then someone needs to make a motion that is in substance of what would either be an approval or denied.
We have to vote on.
Ron, do you want the same one?
Same one.
Yes, please.
Now, before that, we have to vote on another vote, though, correct?
Yes, there is.
Since that's the motion that's been made, yes.
Thank you, yes.
Commissioner Volda.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss.
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes.
So it is now open for another motion.
Okay, I would ask just for the record to be, if it's the exact same motion that you voted on before, you know, someone could say so moved, but just be very clear for the record about what this current motion is, that the, the, someone's asking the commission to vote on.
And also add the special condition, too.
Sounds good, making a, I would like to make a motion to uphold the city in approving, in approving the home occupation, therefore, reject, rejecting, what's the correct adjective here?
That's right, you can say that, rejecting the appeal.
Rejecting the appeal for the home occupation of Adam Baker Tool Company Home Occupation, with the condition of approval of maintaining an appearance as a residential zone.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, Commissioner Volda made the motion, and it was seconded by Commissioner Smith. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Mercero.
No.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss.
Yes.
Commissioner Volda.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
No.
Okay, that, my, my simple brain says that's four to two, but please, somebody.
Mine too.
That is correct.
All right.
It's been resolved.
So now, just to be clear, we'll get a written decision together, and then appeals go both ways, so, you know, if the the, the neighbors that filed the appeal would also have the opportunity to, to appeal that to City Council if they so wish.
All right. Okay.
May I request just a five-minute recess, so we can switch gears over to the public works side, I think we have some folks joining in person.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, it's just a recess, five-minute recess, right? We are reconvening at seven forty-five PM. Our next agenda item is number four, public hearing for file DR dash twenty-three dash zero-three. Design review to renovate and add a vestibule to the existing Public Works Building on Portland Avenue. Improvements for vehicular and pedestrian circulation and parking. And I think I need to call the public hearing, correct? Okay. I'm opening the public hearing for file number, whoops, missed my spot. File DR dash twenty-three dash zero-three. And the public hearing is at seven forty-six. First, I'm going to ask, are there any abstentions from this hearing body, or any conflicts of interest?
No conflicts of interest, but I do need to make a declaration that I do know the general contractor that is appearing to be contracted for the project PNC. I do know one of the project executives, but I do not believe that will cloud or hinder my judgment in any way.
Okay, Commissioner Weiss, any?
No.
No. Commissioner Smith?
None.
Commissioner Labonte?
No.
Commissioner Mercero?
None.
Okay, thank you. No ex parte, has anyone visited, visited the site? Yeah. Yeah, no?
Yes, I have visited the site.
I did drive by.
Yes, I've driven by numerous times.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, same here, okay. I need to link, read that long thing, too, don't I?
Yes, please.
Okay. So read the following, so if you testify, is that the word and where I start? Okay, if you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, it cannot be raised later in any appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved, or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval, according to the standards. Because this is the initial evidentiary hearing, state laws grant any party the right to request a continuance of this hearing, or ask that the record remain open after the hearing is closed. If you do not raise any specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing, or by close of the record, or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal the decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that particular issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair Smith, we're going to queue up a quick PowerPoint.
I know what's happening here, isn't it?
Yeah.
Happy that's just starting.
Toasty.
Okay, so this evening, we are here to have a public hearing for the design review application for the Gladstone Public Works Building renovation, located at eighteen five nine five Portland Avenue, right next door. The proposal is to use the. The proposal is to use the existing building, do an interior remodel. Uh, uh, exterior upgrade and then add a vestibule, which, um, I think there's a pointer on here, yeah. Uh, vestibule, oh, but you guys aren't. Oh, okay, uh, vestibule next to the parking area on the west side, um, that parking area is new. It's going to be striped, there's going to be ADA parking there and landscaping around. Currently, and I have a picture to show you, um, of the existing conditions, but you all are aware because you drive by it, um, or walk by it. The parking is angled up against the building and it's going to switch to parallel parking in the front with street improvements along Portland Avenue. The vestibule is a hundred and thirty-four square feet in size, so that's the only addition to the building's square footage. But there are, um, significant site improvements proposed. So this is zoned light industrial, the site is just under two acres in size. There are no floodplain or environmental overlays on the site that we needed to take into consideration. We did send public notice to property owners within two hundred and fifty feet of the site. Um, as well as all of the applicable review agencies, and we did receive back comments from Gladstone Public Works. Um, as well as Oak Lodge, which are incorporated into your staff report this evening. Um, again, the L I zoning, um, out, uh, uses permitted outright in that zone include uses permitted outright in the C three zone, so. We go to the C three zone and find that a business governmental professional office. As well as community service facilities such as fire station, library, community center, park, utility facility, meeting hall, or transit facility. Both are permitted, so all of the types of uses that'll occur at this site that currently occur at this site continue to be permitted outright in the underlying zone. So here's our Google Street View of how the building looks now, there's no, um, windows along the front. There's a trailer where the new vestibule will be located and there's a fence that runs from the building to the property line on the west side. That will be moved back so that that nice new parking area can be accommodated on that side of the building. Um, and here are just some renderings provided by the architecture firm for how it will look once it's completed. Again, using the existing building, but adding in some windows, um, some, the vestibule there on the top, uh. East elevation on the left-hand side and seeing it from the back down on the right on the west elevation on the bottom. Um, just kind of generally improving the overall look of the existing building. Um, and I just wanted to point out the landscaping improvements because, um, I think these will be, um, a, a nice change to the site, there's. Um, street trees and a planting strip along Portland Avenue, quite a bit of buffer parking between, or buffer to the parking area between this site. And the property to the west, um, and then, as you'll see in the conditions in a moment, some more street trees on the back, um, along the street frontage there. So with that, the recommendation of the planning staff is to approve this design review application with the following four. Special conditions of approval, um, I alluded to the Watts Street improvements, um, these were added in the public works review. Um, acknowledging that we hold this application to the same standard as we would any. Commercial or industrial type development in the city, which is to add street improvements to the adjacent frontages. So we're looking to get the commercial, uh, driveway put in and add the street trees along that frontage. Um, eight foot wide public utility easements are needed along both street frontages. Um, we've been seeing this condition a lot, that the sanitary sewer line needs scoping, I think that's pretty typical of a lot of our older lines in the city, so if it. It's good and good, good shape, then it can stay, if not, then it will need to be changed out. Um, and then the final is from Oak Lodge to, um, submit a short narrative to assess whether there are wastewater connection fees. Um, your public works director Darren Canapoli doesn't believe that that is the case, that. Additional fees will be needed, but he'll, um, submit that with no problem. Um, that is it for the staff report with us this evening, is City Administrator Betts. Um, representing the application as well as the project's, um, architect is available on the Zoom call. I'm happy to answer any questions of the staff report.
Um, I do know in the past, and I don't know if it's been taken care of. That we've had flooding right there on Portland Avenue, right by Public Works, has that been addressed or repaired?
I, I believe that will be addressed in the street improvements, they'll be designed to accept the stormwater that's, um, both onsite now and, and that occurs. From any improvements that are made.
Okay, yeah, because sometimes there's quite the puddle there.
Yes.
Okay, anybody else have any questions?
Planner Austin, if, if you would, uh, since we're doing improvements involving Portland Avenue, is there going to be any wield? Or foot traffic competed, and if so, for how long would you estimate?
That is a great question, um, I am not sure of the extent of that, so I would ask the applicant if she knows that when she has a chance to testify. Oh, Brendan, okay, that, um, Brandon may have the answer to that when he has a chance to speak to that. Thank you.
Heather, would you like me to answer the question now?
I'll, maybe I'll just ask if there's any other questions of me before we hand it over to you to. Provide your applicant's testimony.
Any other questions, commissioners? Okay. Go, go ahead.
Okay, so I'll just hand it over to the applicant.
Great, thank you, um, appreciate the commission having us here tonight, we're excited, this is a huge milestone, uh, for the project. Um, in regards to the staff, you know, summary of the project, I think that she pretty well summed it all up. Um, so I'll just jump into questions unless you want me to go further into specifics on the project, but. To answer the first question, we're looking at starting construction in the fall, so early September. And, uh, we're planning for about a ten-month construction period, so sidewalks, uh, street frontage would be impacted during those periods.
It'd be kind of an intermittent interruption.
That's correct, I mean, well, we don't plan to stop construction during those ten months, so it'll be a continued construction period. Um, and so the contractor will, you know, work with providing access and, um, you know, wayfinding around and, you know. Directing traffic as required, um, and all the other permitting that would be necessary for closing of the sidewalk and such.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, my question is about the lighting, I'm looking at E zero-three, it's, it's very tiny on my, on my page, so forgive me, I'm trying to, um. Decipher, um, so I know with, with, um, changing from light industrial, uh, it's still technically the, it's not changing, but. Um, the use going to more of an office use. Um. I guess, uh, what all lighting is happening on the exterior to, you know. Uh, assuming this is used for office, there's probably going to be people after hours entering and exiting, I guess. Can you walk us through, um, exterior lighting, is there any other lighting other than just be outside the vestibule, it looks like?
And, um, and, and may I ask, are you on four dash forty-seven?
I'm on E zero-three, I'm not sure where's the other one.
E zero point three. Thank you.
Ahah, yes, four dash four-seven, yes, thank you.
You're both right.
But that's a great question, so we are, we are proposing kind of two types of lighting. Both geared towards egress, uh, pedestrian scale lighting, so the pathway, the new concrete walkway, uh, from the parking areas to the vestibule. Will be lit, uh, per code minimum, and then we are adding street lighting, so we're going to add a few street poles, um, that are consistent with. What are on Portland Avenue, and the plan, the drawing that you're referencing is intended to show that we're meeting code minimum, um, requirements in terms of. Egress lighting. So it, not a lot of decorative lighting, if that makes sense, we're not putting any lighting on the building or. Um, trying to highlight anything, uh, with regards to the building.
Great, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Is this vestibule going to be open, like, uh, I, I guess as far as like security, right, is the vestibule open? All the time, or what about, what, how are we? With security?
Great question, um, our understanding is the vestibule will be open during normal city office, you know, hours during business hours. Um, and we're limiting public access, so we are going to provide, if you, the floor plan provided is a little grayscale, so it's a little hard to read. Uh, but we are going to provide a lobby, um, from that vestibule that is controlled security-wise. Um, so it'll be welcoming to the public, um, Public Works experiences some foot traffic, not a lot, but, uh, we are going to accommodate that. And then we will have a conference room off of that lobby space, uh, intended to serve for public meetings, pre-construction meetings. Um, meetings where, you know, a few members of the community would be involved.
Great, thanks, Brandon.
Any other questions? Do we have any public testimony by any chance?
I have not received any.
Okay. Do we, should we then get out of our public hearing then if we have no testimony?
Yeah, you certainly may, if there's no one that's, uh, online or in person to testify, that's, that's appropriated at this point.
Uh, I would entertain a motion to close out our public hearing.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Commissioner Volbada, uh, made the motion to close out the public hearing and Commissioner Pat Smith seconded it. Could I have a roll call vote, please, Tammy?
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss.
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes, public hearing is closed at eight o'clock P M. Okay. So commissioners, do we have any input questions, deliberations? It's pretty cut and dry, isn't it?
Yep, I have no more questions.
You what?
I have no more questions.
Okay. Um, so what is it we're needing, you're needing from us this evening to approve this?
Yes, to, uh, make a decision on the design review application.
Okay. So if we don't have any questions and don't have any deliberations.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept as presented application number D R dash two-three dash O three.
With. A special condition. The special.
With special conditions.
I believe the, uh, recommendation is on four dash one of your packet.
Do they need to be named, Ms. Bannick?
I would state that, state that for the record, yes.
Okay, with the following specific conditions, Watts Street improvements, easements, sanitary sewer scoping. And Oak Lodge condition.
I second. Commissioner Pat Smith made the motion and it was seconded by Commissioner Volbada. Roll call vote, please, Tammy.
Commissioner Mercero.
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss.
Yes.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes, application is approved.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, back to our regular agenda. Um, item number five, municipal code update project. Heather?
Yes, thank you, this is, um, sort of more of a work session type format, but I wanted to bring forward, um, some of the code language. That we are talking about working on, the staff memo that I, um, included, did note that we are looking into home occupation language. And that we'll be planning to bring that to you in the coming months, um, and as Chair Smith knows, the city council held, um, a meeting. And had a presentation from the state, from Department of Land Conservation Development staff. To talk about the climate-friendly and equitable communities project that, um, applies in all of the metro areas in the state, there's eight of them. And we in Gladstone, being part of the Portland metro area, are subject to those standards. So what we will need to do is look at parking regulations as a first, um, piece, and we are required to update our code. By June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, so there's a lot going on at the state right now, the legislature hasn't completed their funding. For the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, um, cycle, there might be some, um. Some funding available to help with code writing, um, D L C D is putting together some model code. They're, um, hiring some interns over the summer from the U of O Planning Program and the P S U Planning Program, and so. Um, there just might be some more resources available if we wait just a little bit on that, um, topic. And, um, there are certain cities that have committed one way or another with what they're going to do with their code, but, um, not a lot have done their code writing yet. So we've, um, the city council asked to have more information brought to them in early fall. And they'll pick a policy direction, there's really three options that you can choose from, um, and they're all related to parking. The first is to remove all parking mandates in the city, so just say, we don't have any more parking minimums. You put whatever the market says that you should put, you just go forth, if you do include parking, you still have to meet our standards, certain amount of landscaping. You know, wheel stops, that sort of thing, but you don't have to put it. Um, and as a reminder, the first step of the state legislation was to remove all parking mandates within a half mile of high. Frequency transit, which is McLaughlin Boulevard for the city of Gladstone, so in our downtown core now and everything toward McLaughlin. And on the other side of McLaughlin, we don't have any minimum parking anymore, so if we see a design review application come up. That will be something that we will do, um, the other piece that is in place. Is multifamily housing, you can only require one space per unit, our code says one point five, so. We would have to apply the one now as required by state law. But the choices that the city will get to make moving forward is for everything not part of those pieces, you can remove all parking mandates. Um, step two is you can pick two out of five items off a laundry list, um, and those include things like. Um, unbundling your parking, which means if you're building a multifamily building, you, um, build the building and you build the parking. But the, um, unit and the parking space don't rent or sell together. So, um, it's essentially saying that there's a certain amount of cost associated with the parking, and if you're not going to use it, you shouldn't have to pay for that. Cost, um, and people who need more of it may have the opportunity to purchase more of it. Um, other provisions in there include things like employers over fifty employees allowing some sort of. Um, alternate transportation, um, uh, they get stipend, uh, fifty dollars to say. You're not driving your car, but you may be needing a transit pass or bike maintenance or some other type of use, um, or, you know, bike locks and helmets. And things that would go toward those types of transportation instead of driving, so in Gladstone, we have fifteen of those type employers. So that could be something that we look at as well. Um, we could have, uh. There's a requirement that, uh, one of the options is to tax for rent parking spaces, we don't have any for rent. Like, uh, lots that charge in Gladstone, but if we did, um, we could choose to put a ten percent tax on that. That would go into a fund for alternative transportation, those types of things, so, um, and then the third option is to basically. It's a laundry list of about eight items where you reduce parking and all these criteria, and you go through your code and, and update, and I. Um, tha- that probably is the most work to do that one because you really are looking at lots of different uses and. How much, um, parking you reduce it by for each one, um, the easiest is definitely option A where you just remove all parking mandates. Um, some cities are choosing that, some are not, uh, option B, uh, according to the state representative who presented is the most. Um, likely to meet the goals of the climate-friendly and equitable communities, uh, legislation, which is to actually reduce greenhouse gases. Because automobiles are seen as one of the major, um, problems in Oregon, we've made great strides in, um, lead buildings. And, um, industrial polluters and things like that, but our, um, emissions are still a major problem, so. Um, that's the talk on, we're not talking about this tonight, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we're tracking it. Um, you're probably hearing about it, it's in the news a lot, it's something that every city in the metro area is dealing with, so if you, um, mingle with other planning commissioners. You might hear about it, that sort of thing, um, but we will be bringing that to you this fall, once we get a direction from the city council of which of the options they want to pursue. Then we'll have some work cut out for us on how we update the code to reflect that. Um, so those are the two things we're not talking about tonight. Are there any questions that I can answer about those?
Questions?
No.
Okay, more to come. Um, but what we are talking about tonight, there's basically two topics, one is clear and objective, um, residential review standards. And then the other is, um, how and when we, um, exact improvements to our public streets and how we, we guarantee that. So regarding your clear and objective standards, I worked with your city attorney Josh Soper on this. Because, um, I asked him the simple question, is the conditional use language, uh, a viable option for reviewing housing? And he said, well, no, but if you did have one of these options in place, um, you could. You, you could meet that sniff test, I guess you would say, like, that it, it does meet, so he gave me three options, he gave me four actually, but the other one. Um, it was pretty outlandish, I can't remember what it was, that it was like, no, we don't even want to address that, but, so, um. The three options before you that we can pursue, the first. address that. But so the three options before you that we can pursue, the first is to update our conditional use chapter and have a specific subsection regarding residential uses. And then it would be clear and objective, but it would still require the type three review level. So that's one option to consider. Right now, our conditional use chapter, which I added into your packet for this evening, has pretty subjective language. And that is the nature of a conditional use review. That's where you decision makers get to say that there might be some impacts of this use that are above and beyond what a permitted use in a zone would make. So we want to make conditions on that. But there are ways to add criteria for residential that would be clear and objective. They would just be in addition to what's required of other residential uses. The second is to say, we actually don't want those types of, other types of housing in our, in our zone. So that is really common now in cities to say, we don't want single-family detached residential, new single-family detached residential in our multifamily zone. We want to focus that in our R seven point two and to a lesser extent in our R five zone. And the reason you do that is because you are trying to meet certain density thresholds. And so the more single-family detached you get in your MR zone, the lower those densities get as the city overall. So those MR zones have been put into place as the places where you want to make denser housing. So does it make sense to say no more single-family detached housing new? We typically say new because we don't want to make people non-conforming because they're living in a home that's single-family detached in that zone. But that is an option that, to me, that is a reasonable option. I don't know why you would preclude other middle housing types like triplex, quadplex, cottage clusters and townhomes when you permit duplexes. So I think I would recommend, if that's the, the pathway you want to go on, that you move those other middle housing types into permitted outright and then exclude the single-family detached residential. That would be my recommendation if you choose to pursue B. And then C would, would be just basically, so I guess I recommend a hybrid of B and C, that you would disallow single-family detached new in your MR zone. But then you would allow outright your other middle housing types, like duplex and multifamily dwellings are already permitted outright. Any thoughts on that?
Out of these three options, which is the, which is the least labor-intensive and the least costly?
I, I think B or C, you're either switching from conditional to permitted or excluding altogether. So I think B, C, or a hybrid, like I described.
I like the hybrid idea.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just curious.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, continue.
Okay, and so no more questions on the MR zone. Move forward with doing a hybrid of focusing our middle housing and multifamily housing in the MR zone and focus.
General consensus, Commissioner Volbada, how do you feel about a hybrid?
Love it.
Commissioner Weiss?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Mercero, how do you feel about a combination hybrid?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
I'm in favor of it.
Commissioner Labonte?
I'll be in a favor.
You mean in favor? You have a puzzled look.
Well, I always do.
I, I think that would give contractors, individuals, developers more options.
Yeah, I agree.
And I'm not about limiting people, but I don't want it to be labor-intensive either.
Well, I, I appreciate that comment because the needed housing statute that governs clear and objective language is specifically written to reduce barriers to providing the type of housing that's needed. So I really do recommend in cities I work in that you focus your single-family detached into your lower density zones and then make it easier to build the higher density, in the higher density zones.
Yep, yep, I, I agree. I think it really aligns with our comprehensive plan.
Yep, I like that. Yay.
Okay, great, easy. We'll move forward with that one.
We're about easy.
Okay.
Just don't ask us to make decisions about things that are difficult.
We say that at eight fifteen PM.
Let's see, my clicker's not working.
That was a tough one, though. It just was.
There's only two more slides, though.
Okay.
We'll just ask Tammy to advance us.
So in your packet also was some language regarding our general provisions and improvement guarantees. And this was one that we really struggled with, with a partition application. And when do we require someone to do improvements and how do we require the guarantees? So when I really read through the language, I realized what we really needed was clarification between the final plat and the final certificate of occupancy. And this was how city engineer Pat Cecil portrayed it to me, that that was how he understood it to be applied. And that made sense to me. So I think that gets clarified in the language of the improvement agreement. And then when we look at improvements, we can link it back specifically to this language so that it's clear this is where we're going to be requiring this. And then what I remember.
This would fall in line with what we decided on the petition that we had to.
Well, we weren't able to make the decision that any improvements would be needed prior to final plat because the language gave the option of certificate of occupancy. So on that decision, it was that they could make the improvements before the final certificate of occupancy, short of any distinguishing language between a plat and certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
Does that make sense? And then if you'll switch to the next slide, Tammy, this is what I should have included also is the other issue that we have run into is not having an ability to require improvements like sidewalk on things like middle housing. So you might have a situation where someone comes in and has a 10,000 square foot lot and they can build, you know, five cottages on it with a parking lot and landscaping, but they're not required to improve the sidewalk along the front edge, but there's quite a bit of use to that site once you put five dwelling units in there. So a lot of cities are starting to, and I believe you were forwarded an article about this from maybe Lake Oswego as well, that how to make sure that middle housing and even some single-family detached on certain circumstances are required to install these improvements. So I looked through the code to see where we could address that language. And I think there's two opportunities. One is under improvements that when we talk about improvements that are installed by a developer, either as a requirement or it as at his or her option, Michelle can form. And then I think a follow-up sentence here. Public improvements are required for all development as determined by the city public works department or, or some sort of language there to say, we can require them, we can require them to our standards to give us the ability to do that. Is there a question?
I'm sorry, yeah, at some point.
Okay, and then the second point I thought we could link it in also is where we talk about the design and improvement with, of streets. So again, saying when you design streets and roads, you have to design them to our standards and you have to design them when they're required per seventeen four two oh three oh. So the language is not here yet. I ran out of time to be able to thoughtfully craft that, but I have examples from other cities that we can use to, to do that.
Now, I recall that we voted maybe a year ago regarding, you know, new, to this topic with the requirement for sidewalks only if it was on the transportation plan. I'm not that crazy. We did that.
No, no, I do recall that. And there was a similar conversation. I remember immediate past mayor was present for that one too. And she also brought up a conversation about having applied for a grant to, to bring in money to the city for a citywide sidewalk and right-of-way repair, which kind of helped with making some of our decisions with like knowing that, you know, we didn't want to like piecemeal a lot of the stuff together. We wanted it to be more cohesive citywide. And then we never heard about it again.
Okay, well, one other thing I'll mention, because that's a great point. In some cities, they do a fee and lieu. So if it is piecemeal and you would prefer not to have it constructed in that manner, there are ways to, and, and this is just shooting off my hip, without talking to city administrator Betts, who has to keep the books and, and keep track of all this. But you can set up certain funds that if you pay into the fee and lieu, it's put aside for sidewalk. And then you can use that for future projects. I don't know, I'd have to definitely speak to more of your staff members, your public works director and your city administrator before suggesting that as a viable option. But some cities do use a fee and lieu for that exact purpose.
I think that's an option we should look into.
Okay, happy to do that.
How does everybody else feel about that?
I love it. I've seen it used on a lot of bigger cities. And that I think is where my concern is, is if we have like administrative capacity to even, to, to allow that as an option at this point.
Yeah. I'll, I'll speak to the other people who, that would affect a city staff level and, and come back with more information on that.
I'd appreciate that.
But it sounds like we can move forward with the multifamily district pretty easily. So maybe we'll get the DLCD notice going on that. We do have to give the state 35 days' notice before we change any code language. It comes to you first and then goes to the city council for a final decision. So knowing with those dates, it would be June before we could bring that forward, but we'll get that put in so we can get the ball rolling.
Great.
And then I do anticipate, like I said, having more code work to do with the home occupations and then with that climate-friendly equitable communities moving forward.
Okay, great.
Any other sections of code that anyone thought needed some work? I'll just keep.
Criteria for at-home businesses.
Yeah, for sure. And I'll, I'll continue to ask that as we talk about code, just so that if things pop into your mind and, you know, we can keep talking about it.
Okay.
I do have a quick question.
Yeah.
Does it seem, it seems reasonable to me, and I'm hopefully others, I think, along the same lines, that whatever our municipal codes are, they ought to be somewhat in parallel to our neighbor communities. And, and if other communities are doing things that work and we're not, maybe we should adopt those or, or at least consider them.
Sure, I will. It's not a secret that we planners look at other jurisdictions to write code. We don't come up with it on our own for the most part. Innovation aside, if there are things that are working in other communities and we talk to other city staff and say, how's this working? And often they'll be like, oh, it's great, except subsection F really messes us up, you know? And then we'll be like, okay, we'll take it without subsection F, right? So absolutely, thank you for that. We will definitely look into that.
Any other questions or input? Okay, I think, I think we're done. Okay, no business from the public? Tammy?
I have not received any requests, no.
Business from the planning commission. I'll start with Commissioner Mercero. Do you have anything to share?
Nothing to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Smith?
No, good evening, everybody.
Commissioner Labonte?
Just considering our, our, our vote earlier today regarding the Baker tools, I hope that the neighbors there can, you know, have a peaceful time. And I, I hope that Mr. Baker, whatever he chooses to do in the future, will just, you know, be mindful of those large vehicles and the, the impact on the neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Volbada, Volbada, am I getting it right?
You're real close.
Okay. Okay.
Nothing new for me.
Okay, Commissioner Weiss?
I'll, I'll just reiterate what I said earlier, which is I, I really appreciate the discussion today was all about trying to take care of the residents in Gladstone. So I just appreciate all of you for the thoughtful discussion today.
Okay, great. I'm hoping that everyone got their filings done. Everybody? Okay, good. I too. Why, why'd you laugh about that?
No, because.
I was just gonna say, yes, everyone got their filing.
Looked at me, that's fine.
No, I was not.
I want to reiterate what Commissioner Weiss has said. It is a privilege and an honor to volunteer and serve on this commission with you guys. It just, we seem to work rather well together. And I just am grateful and thankful for all of you and all of your input. And it just, it makes this enjoyable and it should be fun to a degree, as well as I learn a lot and how to work through. We haven't had any conflicts, maybe disagreements. No, we haven't even had any of those. We just really listen to each other. Yeah, we're, we're good listeners. So I just want to thank you very, very much for all your time. I'm sorry that Langston, Commissioner Langston is not here tonight, but hopefully he'll be back with us next time. And other than that, I don't think, unless you guys want to consider maybe getting some additional education on land use, we could find out when the next training is, if anybody's needing that. Okay. We'll look into that. But other than that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
I'll second.
Commissioner Volbada made the motion. What? That's right. Okay, got it. And Commissioner Weiss seconded. Roll call vote, please, Tammy.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss.
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero. Chair Smith.
Yes, meeting is adjourned at eight twenty-five PM. And our next meeting is May sixteenth. Thank you.